Okay. Okay, gentlemen. I'd like to call the March twenty seven, two thousand twenty three meeting of the Hamilton Board Selectment to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Hi.
We're meeting live in the Board Selectmen's Office and over Zoom. The board is recording the meeting. Is there anybody else recording it? Okay, so we're meeting in our office tonight because the government study committee, the government study committee is meeting in the auditorium and they have representatives from some state organizations attending over Zoom. So we're giving them courtesy using the big room. All right, minutes, Pam.
Uh, we don't have any tonight.
Well done, Pam.
So sorry.
That's all right. Done.
I don't have any minutes either.
Okay. We have a public hearing scheduled because we need to take an official position on the vote by mail for the upcoming election. We have the town clerk here to present.
Actually, there's not.
Give us a background on it, if you wouldn't mind.
Um, you have the chart. One of the biggest things about vote by mail for the clerk's office is it creates a tremendous amount of extra work. And the end result is the same. Um, I think the last page says it all. With all the steps involved with that voting, the vote by mail with the registrations and everything. And in the end, it still has to be processed the same way. We take those same ballots. They go to the check-in table. They go to the checkout table and they deposit it in the ballot box. But now instead of the voter, that's done by two uh, poll employees, poll workers. That's just into it. Initially, there are twelve steps that we get into just before we get to that process. And that's, but that's how it sounds. It says it's about seven minutes per ballot. That's a low estimate. That, if you have everything right there and you can just put everything in the envelope and get it in mail, that's not, it's not easier listed here than it actually is. I personally don't see a need for it. If people can't get to the polls, we do have the absentee ballots. There's, if they're for whatever reason, out of town or ill or whatever. I mean, there's still an option that they can vote, they can vote without actually attending the polls. But for just mail-in voting, I just really don't see for a local election. And it can be expensive. The extra cost from the background work is just it adds to the expense of the election.
So the vote by mail process, though, is the similar process to absentee voting, right?
It's very similar in some respect. Yep.
So.
In a lot of respects, but they are, there are some differences.
Hmm. So the board has already agreed with your position on early voting. So that part is done.
Okay, early voting with regard to lock-in, in-person voting? Or early voting with regard to vote by mail, which is also?
No, I mean, the two questions you came before us a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
To talk about that part's already done.
Okay.
Um, so how do we feel?
So the discussion at that time was for both, for either in person or vote by mail?
I mean, personally, I didn't have a problem with the vote by mail because I think it, it brings more to it. Your point is that there's an awful lot of extra work to it.
There's extra work. And again, if someone can't make it to the polls, we still have absentee ballot options, right?
I'll open up discussion by the board. So we have an opportunity to either opt out or vote by mail or say, no, let's go ahead with it.
Do you want to say?
I have nothing to say, Mom.
Uh. I'm for opting out. I, 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 I think we have, uh, you see, you have the absentee ballot thing and it's not like we have a lot of races on the ballot that would, you know, generate a lot of turnout of people. And so if I were to vote, I would probably vote to opt out.
When we get to the state elections, it'll be a different story.
State run, mandatory.
Right.
Mandatory, right. And I did, I did look it up. Many, many towns of our size are opting out of it for the same reason that
many, yeah.
You still have, you still have absentee ballot opportunity.
Correct.
And, yeah.
Okay.
Let me ask this, but would you have to, if you had vote by mail, would you have to print a, a mail-in ballot for every voter?
We would have to print, well, they'd be absentee and early voter and um, really vote by mail now are, the state has made them the same ballot.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't print those, obviously, the same way we print the absentee ballots now, but we'd also have to with, as opposed to the absentee, when we return, that when we send someone a vote by mail ballot, we have paid postage on that return envelope as well. And in a lot of cases, about fifteen percent of those that we send out are not returned. Well, if we've already put the postage on it, that ship is sailed. And, and I, again, it's a lower percentage as far as vote by mail, when, when you're talking about a local election, so lower turnout regardless, I mean, in general. But we're putting money into something that we may not even see.
Yeah, but I guess I'm asking, in anticipation of, there's a thousand voters in town. I know there's more, but just say there's a thousand votes. You have to print a thousand ballots in anticipation that everyone would say.
Oh, no, no, not, we don't, we don't expect that everybody's going to vote by mail or absentee.
So you just like pick a number, thirty percent or twenty percent?
Actually, we have the advantage that we can print and if we need more, we can get more printed. So it depends on how.
You've done that on voting days where you ran downstairs, printed more ballots and brought them up.
We actually print our own ballots here, so.
Really?
Lot more cost effective, it's not more fast effective. Once I figured out how to do it, we've been doing it. For every local election, we print our own.
Do you print them blank or fill them?
I actually, when I, when I'm running, do I fill any of the boxes?
Are you in Chicago? Where are you? This is recorded immediately.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Down.
Any more questions for Eva?
No.
All right. I'll call for a vote on this. All those in favor of agreeing with the town clerk.
It does have to be roll called.
And it will be.
Okay.
I entertain a motion to agree with the town clerk to opt out of mail voting.
So moved. Thank you.
All those in favor by name, John, fun, I.
Donald, Dan, what I.
Greg, I'm a sigh.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. And the, the one we already decided was the.
Yeah, we'd have to opt into that.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva.
Thank you, Eva. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a discussion of the tie-in bond report. Do we have?
We have Craig French.
Okay, so Yvonne is not, uh.
No, unfortunately, Yvonne had something come up. She couldn't make it tonight, so I'm standing in.
So Craig, welcome to our meeting remotely.
Thank you.
We have some questions and we actually were looking for, first, we want a bit of an overview from you, Diane Bond. I don't know. I know Yvonne was kind of the point person on this. Are you pretty familiar with the project, the, the report?
Yeah, I did. I, I did a quality control review of the whole report. I kind of pulled it all together at the end. So I've, I've read through the whole report. I didn't, I didn't put it together myself, but I, I'm familiar with all the sections.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. And Craig, why don't you kind of take the lead in this? Okay.
Basically, in, in layman's terms, we just want to break it down is, you know, the elevator pitch of what's, what's in the report, how does it look for us? What are our course of actions? What's immediate? And we have time to decide what we want to do.
Sure. Yeah, I, I, in, you know, big picture point of view, overall, the, the building is not in, in bad shape, right? It's for, for its age, it's got some issues, some cracks, some spalls. It's got some things that you have to address. But overall, I think the building structurally and, you know, sort of foundationally is, is in good condition. The, the problem, the biggest problem that you guys have is it's a town building. It's a publicly accessed building. And it's not accessible at all, you know, handicap accessible. So, you know, the ADA codes, the new AAB codes, they all require public, publicly, or they all require public buildings to be accessible. And that's where a lot of the, you know, big ticket item costs are, the elevator, the structural improvements to the elevator ramps, things like that. Um, that's where the, that's where the big costs are coming from to try to make the building accessible. So it, like, in a nutshell, you know, the elevator pitch, the building is, I think, I think the building can be reused, but if it's going to be publicly accessed, you need to upgrade, you need to do some accessibility upgrades. Now, all of those don't have to happen all at the same time, but they will have to, they will have to happen eventually.
No, I'm looking at immediate, category A, category B, and a total. You know, our, our, our total is seven million and our immediates are four million. Of, of that immediate needs is most of that, I mean, I see a, a big chunk here for architecture, structural and hazardous materials. Oh. How do those fall in area priority?
So the, the big, the biggest cost item is the elevator. That, I, I think if you, it's kind of spread out between a couple of different disciplines, architectural, structural, and then there's some mechanical stuff in there too for the, for the machinery of it, but that's plus or minus a million dollars ballpark before contingencies. So when you add in contingencies in engineering, it's probably one point three million, one point four million to, to design and build the elevator. So that's, that's kind of the biggest cost item in, in that first category. Going through the cost estimate, I think one of the other big costs were doors, to make the doors egress and handicap accessible. And I think one of the other big ticket items was the roof. Yeah, the roof was installed in two thousand and six. So it's fourteen years old or, at this point, seventeen years old. So you've probably got a few more years of, of life expectancy out of that, but that's something that, you know, usually those roofs after twenty plus years or so, you start to get leaks and you got to start chasing that stuff down. So that's something that you want to look at.
Um. Craig, which roof? The, uh, regular roof or the membrane roof?
Uh, they have here the TPO roof, flat roof section was installed two thousand and six. And then looks like the asphalt shingle roof. Slope roof section, they don't have a year when it was installed, but they're recommending that that be in that, they're recommending that that be replaced as well.
Are we in violation of any codes for anything?
Currently? No, because you haven't done any renovations.
Okay.
But as soon as you start doing renovations, the existing building code will kick in and you'll, and you'll have to be, you'll have to upgrade your accessibility record, your accessibility to the building. So if you, if you do nothing ever, then you're grandfathered in. But as soon as you start doing renovations to the building, you'll trigger code requirements.
Is there a cap there or a cutoff where that kicks in?
Kind of, um, they're used, the, the existing building code used to work off of costs, but now it's based on um, level of alteration. So you can replace a roof, that's a level one alteration. It doesn't really require any upgrades to the building. Then there's a level two alteration, which does require some upgrades to the building, including some handicap accessibility upgrades. And then level three, which is basically like a full renovation of the building and that pretty much triggers everything, any, anything that you replace will have to meet current codes.
So I thought it used to be like a thirty percent of the value of the building.
Yeah, it used to be.
It used to be over three years or something. And we had a renovation of, when we, when the police department left and we rehabbed the bottom of it, the bottom of the building. You know, we were worried that that amount would trigger, if you will, that code. So that has gone away and now they use a different formula?
Yeah, that, once they, when they adopted the IBC, the International Building Code, that code has the level of alterations. Um, and actually, it was, it was kind of Western Mass that was pushing for the change because the buildings aren't worth as much in Western Mass, so the, it was much easier to trigger those thresholds on a renovation in Western Mass versus Eastern Mass. So yeah, now it's, it's based on the amount of work that you do on the building regardless of cost.
So are you saying, trying to get sense here, we might not trigger the ADA part if we don't go too big on rehabbing the building?
There, yes, you can do some renovations to the building without triggering ADA requirements or in Massachusetts, AAB requirements. So you would have to stay within level one, which is basically just repairs. So you could do, you could replace the roof. You could do some of the masonry and concrete repairs that were in the, that were in the, um, report. But if you start, if you start reconfiguring any space or adding doors or changing, changing that type of stuff, that's a level two alteration and that will, that will start to trigger some of the AAB requirements.
The, where Bob Markle, our town administrator, had gotten a, uh, a grant to replace windows, pretty substantial amount, but that wouldn't be a trigger because that's exterior?
Um, if you, so if we can, if you can justify, let's say that the existing windows have reached the end of their service life and, and you're replacing in kind, then no, that would not trigger, um, that would be, that would also be considered a level one alteration because you're just replacing windows that have expired. But let's say you, you know, let's say you put in a new window in somebody's office that doesn't have a window. Now you're, you're reconfiguring their space and that would trigger a level two alteration. So you can't, so you can do repairs, we'll call them, repairs and level one alterations. You do without triggering a lot of upgrades. Once you get into the level two, which is, you know, reconfiguring space, changing um, changing occupancy areas, like, you know, I know Yvonne also did a spatial planning portion of the, of this, um, task. If you start changing offices and uses in areas, then that, that's what triggers the upgrades.
Does fire protection fall under any of those categories that would have to be added? Or is that if you're just doing repairs, does that not have to be addressed as well?
Just, it's, it's similar to, yeah, so, so fire protection, mechanical, uh, energy code, accessibility, all those upgrades get triggered to varying degrees when you hit level two and level three alterations. And it's kind of a, you know, a sliding scale, we'll call it, you know, depending on the level of alteration that you're doing will trigger how much, how much upgrades you'll be required to do.
Uh, just for the record, Dalton has told us he is recording the meeting.
And a lot of stuff we're talking about triggering right there is a lot of, a lot of safety concerns to begin with.
Hmm.
I see, um, an asbestos sampling done. Was any lead paint testing done?
Uh, lead paint?
I saw the report here for the asbestos where they did all the sampling in there, but I didn't know, in a building this old, obviously it's got to have lead paint. So I didn't know if that accounts for anything when we're doing repairs or upgrades or renovations. Or if that's just into that whole hazardous material thing.
Yeah, so the, so the way the hazardous materials cleanup, we'll call it, or abatement works is if you, it's fine as long as you, sort of similar to the, to the level alterations upgrade, it's fine as long as you leave it. So if, you know, if you have an asbestos-covered pipe, whatever, it's not, you're not in any kind of violation and you're not in danger of, of, you know, endangering anyone's safety as long as you just leave it there. But as soon as you start to do construction and you disturb the asbestos or the lead paint or whatever, and the, you know, the flakes or get it, get into the air, that's when it becomes a problem and that's where the containment and abatement is required. So the areas that he identified, and I, I didn't print out the hazardous materials part of the, um, report, but the areas that he identified that were positive for HBMA, if you do renovations that affect those materials, then you'll have to deal with the abatement of those materials. If you're doing, if you're doing renovations in other parts or areas that don't have HBMA, then, then you don't have to deal with it.
We'll be turned to. We're going to reference a page in the, that's, we're going to page in them apart. Um, but as you talk about the total cost, projected cost could be as high as seven million dollars. For.
Yeah, I mean, and it also has a, you know, almost a two million dollar contingency just for inflation and unknown, unknown work that could come up. But yeah, I mean.
Forty percent contingency.
Hmm.
Yeah, forty percent contingency. And, you know, we put that in there just because this is a conceptual level, right? We don't have any design documents. We haven't developed any construction plans or whatever. So that's, that's in the recover, you know, obviously you guys are going to do this next year, so there's going to be inflation between today and when the project actually gets done. So you want to, we want to kind of capture that as well.
Right. So you're putting that aside, you're still over four million dollars in cost.
Yep. Yeah. If you guys found a pot of money, you, you know, it'd probably be, it would be the four point five million. And then the engineering fee also is based on the contingency. So that's, you know, probably under a million dollars. So it's probably about a five-plus million dollar project total all in. You know, like I said, if you guys hit the mega box next week or the power ball.
Is that an option? So, but is this, yeah, yeah, legal. Um, so does this include this cost here, the, where Yvonne had come back or bothered showing us the, the layout changes for the town hall? Is that part of this proposal as well?
No, this is, this is just the repairs to the building. So if you wanted to, although it does have the, it does have the elevator, which is a new item, and I think the elevator is also part of Yvonne's spatial planning, but uh, you know what, and I also remember the, you know, the cost of, of the bathrooms here as well.
Well, she had a pretty extensive bathroom upgrade. You recall that, Tom? And then part of our concern originally, or what we saw in the last presentation, was a lot of office restructuring, if you will. And is that included in this number?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the, at the cost estimate breakdown, and she does have a line item in here for new accessible men's and women's bathrooms.
Hmm.
So that cost is in there. I don't remember seeing anything for office equipment.
Not so much equipment, but it was like reimagining the space and, and part of what she had presented was utilizing more of the second floor for the town hall municipal offices, which removed the library from the town hall. And is this part of that cost? So that's kind of a thing, because.
Yeah, I would say. No, she had put in her report that it did not include, read through, I just read through the architect section earlier. Sorry, I saw a statement in here that said that the report, that the cost included the repairs, but not the spatial planning upgrades, but looking at the cost estimate, it looks like she does have some items, some line items in there, like the bathroom cost she has in the, in the cost estimate.
Well, I think if the bathroom.
Oh, actually, you know what, though? I think those would be required even without the, even if you didn't do the reconfiguration of the building, right? The building still doesn't have accessible bathrooms, I don't think.
Yeah. And it wasn't.
That's probably why she has the cost in there because they would be required whether you did the reconfiguration of the building or not.
Well, there was a comment also about the square footage requiring so many bathroom pictures, if you will.
The amount, the capacity of the building.
Right.
Yeah. So I, so I guess I would, I would stick with, no, the cost is not in there, but I would also caveat that with, I think some of the costs of those renovations are part of the repair requirements. Oh, you know, sort of already in there, like the elevator is already included in the cost. It looks like the bathrooms are already included in the cost, but there's likely other costs associated with reconfiguring the, the building or the offices that are not in this cost estimate.
Yeah, I really don't see a lot of wall work listed in the, uh, in the quote here. But it does seem to be a pretty intensive analysis of, like you said, the bones of the building, the structures, HVAC, electrical, et cetera. Pretty hefty number. Um, I think one of the concerns we have with Yvonne's presentation with the new layout was, as I said, it utilized the square footage upstairs for office space. But then that moves the library out of the building. And then what would be the plan for the library? If you're spending seven million dollars to upgrade the town hall, you're still going to do, have to do something for a structure to house the library on top of it. And I've been looking at a total, another whole building, which is not going to be a, you know, two hundred thousand dollar building for the library.
Right, and I, I think we had briefly talked about this months ago, right? There, there's all these different dominoes, as you just said, that could fall and, you know, depending on what path you go down is what, you know, what, you know, what variable will, will get triggered. So I, I think initially we, we had said, well, let's just look at the town hall building, figure out what we're dealing with, and then we can decide sort of which path makes the most sense. Because you're right, if you renovate the building, you know, domino two is the library gets moved somewhere, and then domino three is where's the library going? If the library stays, then where do all these other offices go? Right? Do you need, do you need to find a space for that?
Yeah. So I guess kind of back to the original thing. Looking at this, Craig, what do you see as the, the number one need to address in the structure? If you, if you had to pick from a laundry list of things here and said, boy, if I was going to be in this building for another twenty years, you've got to pay attention to this.
I mean, I would say the mo, the most important things in any building is building envelope. Right? You don't want, you don't want water getting into the building, right? Because that's, that just spirals the building downhill fast. So I would say, you know, roofs, windows, any cracks in the, in the exterior or the foundation, anywhere where water or moisture can get in the building and start causing problems. So those would be my, you know, top priorities is make sure that the building is tight. If you've, you know, if you have a tight waterproof building, you know, it'll last forever.
Hmm, hmm.
And then, you know, so if you take, if you sort of, if you attack those items first, it, it not only takes care of those issues, but it buys you some time, right? The building's not going to deteriorate and you've got time to figure out what to do with it. And bonus, those kinds of things don't trigger upgrades to accessibility and fire protection and all those kinds, all those kinds of things.
I want to be cautious in saying, we're not against accessibility upgrades. We're just understanding that there's a huge cost in doing it.
Oh, sure.
The board certainly feels this board, this building should be accessible to everybody. And we've done that with ramping out front, um, different accessibility things that go from floor to floor. But like you say, this is a bit of a sweater with a thread here. You pull that thread and the rest of it is going to start spooling away.
Yep, no, you guys, and you guys are not, you guys are not alone. There's a lot of municipalities, even private owners that have buildings that were. Buildings that were, that need accessibility upgrades and. You know, once you do one, like you said, you pull on that sweater and it just goes and goes and goes, and now it becomes an ex- a significant cost that, you know, people aren't prepared to pay. Don't, you know, just don't have the money. Like you said, it's not that you don't want the building to be accessible, but it costs money that. A lot of people, a lot of municipalities just don't have.
And doing that doesn't necessarily answer our, our question about more space. Better flow throughout different departments. We've talked about that, Don, with like. You look at building, for instance, you know, planning, conservation, building should all be one contiguous, so they share information. But how do you do it with this footprint? So. Works office exactly, you know, where they're crowded. Where do we go from here, gentlemen?
Um, I don't think there's any good answer right now. We've got a lot of information here. It definitely opens the doors on, or the eyes of what. What we're dealing with and we need to. Creatively explore what we gotta do. I mean, there's, there's no easy answer and there's no set answer in this right now, just. You know, there's interests and concerns that need to be fixed, you know, we gotta, we gotta be, start being creative.
Right.
We're gonna, I think we, we also gotta be. Take a global view. We've got. Seven million, just seven million dollars here. Six million dollars at the fire station, five million. Senior center.
Three over there.
Three, three over there. Uh, capital needs at the schools. Uh, what else we got? Fiber optic.
Um, power balls, that was what you said.
So I think we gotta figure out a way to prioritize our.
Number, number one, though.
Multi-year plan, I think is what you.
Right, yeah. Long term, but number one, prioritize any safety concerns they have to go through, right, which we have done.
Yeah.
You know, I think.
But to find it, but we've taken care of a few things over there too.
Yeah, I agree. I think, like you said, I think the, the priority, sort of the. The priority immediate concerns, right, of the, of the highest priority, the ones that are the biggest. Biggest ticket items to address first is, yeah, safety and, and I would say building envelope, to make sure that the building doesn't. Deteriorate while you're figuring out what the best thing to do with it is.
Alright.
Well, I think part of that is, um, you know, Bob's. Or the bond acknowledgement from the state giving the five hundred thousand to fix the windows, which. Must be stained glass, but that's a heck of a price, but that will help with the, uh, the.
The ADA as well, so it, it, it says it could do, you could use it for other things, so. It's five hundred and forty thousand for windows renovations and ADA improvements.
It's a multi-tiered thing.
Um, but that will help.
When you're in a lift. I don't know, how much did that cost?
Gary? An answer question. I don't know, we were, we were worried about that last week.
We got a Supreme Court decision.
Just a question for the consultant. Um, focused on the building. But if you trigger ADA. Doesn't that also? Trigger your exterior parking requirements and your parking lot. Um, as part of compliance?
Yeah, ability extends not only within the building, but leading up to the building. So. Yeah, you would need either ramps or if the parking lot is, has too steep of a grade. Then you would potentially have to flatten out the grade so that you can, you can easily or, or. The building is accessible. From a, from a handicap perspective, so yeah, there are, there are limits on. Um, slopes and ramps, cross slopes, that types of thing.
And good, good. And similar to. The number of. Urinals and toilets that are required. Handicap spaces will also come into play. So you're probably gonna have, I mean, we have what, two out there now?
But they're not the van type either, which is.
Yeah, I'm just raising the issue about dollars and cents here where. Pulling the thread of the sweater. Once ADA gets involved, that's. You're gonna have not much left of your sweater.
Right, that one, Don, doll, I think.
Yeah, and it looks like, it looks like the site civil cost includes. He's got ten thousand dollars for sidewalk upgrades and another ten thousand dollars for accessible route to the main entrance and accessible parking. Um, regrading parking lot, he's got twenty thousand dollars reline, so it looks like they've addressed. That issue. He's got, they've got site. Um, costs included in here.
I think we gotta go back to, I think what Craig and Don have all said. We have to look at a more global view here, what we're talking about. We have several projects. This is a multi-year thing. It really is kind of a thing back for the capital planning committee and advisory as well. You know. I think what you've done, Craig, in your team with looking at this building here, but we need to factor that in with other needs, like Don said, the fire department, the senior center. Fiber, you know, we have many. Multi-million dollar projects that are on the horizon and different scheduling. And figure out how we're going to make this all dovetail together. Every need is justified. You know, you know. Your wife wants a car and you want a car, which car comes first?
Yeah, we know that.
That's a much easier answer than this one. I lost your sound. Boom, there you go, it's back now.
But I think putting it on the web would let people know what we're talking about here for the cost associated with this building. Everyone's been kicking around, oh, it might be a million dollars. No, it's more. It's a heck of a number.
Some houses are almost a million, right? Some houses are almost a million now.
Yeah, right.
Never mind the building design.
But they're also not stuck with the requirements ADA and the whole thing of, yeah.
Egypt's starting fresh there.
Sure, sprinkler, all that. Okay, do you have any more questions for, uh, Craig?
Well, good, well, good.
And so, and we'll have Bob back next week. Bonjour. Uh, Bob Markle is in France with a well-earned vacation.
Oh, nice. I actually just got back from Mexico.
But you were still there.
Yeah, right, we couldn't tell from.
I wish, I wish. That actually is the picture I took while I was on vacation.
Oh, nice.
It's nice.
Okay. Great, thank you, and, uh, Televan, uh, thank you for her work and. We'll reach back out through Bob and see about the next schedule.
Yep, for sure. Yeah, anything you guys need, just let us know.
Super, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Yep.
Next on our agenda is closing and signing the warrant. Well, typically we have a close and sign the following week anyhow. Um, we did have a request from a citizen about. Uh, speaking, they would like to talk to select board about adding an article to the warrant. So. Uh, we cannot really discuss that tonight because it came in too late to be posted. But. Former selectman Jim Smith would like to come and talk to the board. And if we own the courtesy to make his point next week, I, and we're not up against the gun, we're closing a warrant either. How do you feel about that?
So you gotta just leave the warrant open till, till next week, yeah.
You okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, we'll encourage Jim to share as much information prior to that, so we have as much to review. Um, a second thing. Yes, if that's okay?
Yeah.
All right, good. Um, there was, do you have a draft copy? You gave it to, uh. A warrant, you gave it to Ted?
Ted, Ted gave it back, right? No, you didn't give it to me. You gave, you gave me the wrong thing. You gave me the thing on the water district. Yeah.
Okay. Um, there was talk about a potential warrant article to.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm saying no more.
Yeah, a potential warrant article to address, uh, the request from the school committee on capital.
Yeah, they, what did they decide to do on that?
Well, it's in the assessment letter.
Are they doing it on three? Or five different? They want to do a menu, do they?
Well, there was talk about a menu, but in conversation with the. Uh, town attorney and House seventy, seventy-one is written. You get an assessment letter, you vote on the whole thing. They showed two different things because they had two different votes. One was six to one, six to one, and one was seven to zero. But the assessment is, here's our assessment. By the way, it includes these capital items, and it's all part of the budget number.
So now they want to do it as one?
That's what we're, we're, we have to do.
Okay, so we can't treat it as.
Right, it can't be a menu, and it's not going to be a separate article for. Each of the capital needs.
So it's gonna be, so.
In the regular budget.
Take it or leave it.
But it's not gonna say that. I don't have the exact figure. It's not gonna say eight million dollars is your assessment for the school. It is another million bucks for. Capital players, capital, eighty-five thousand.
No, it'll be. Eight, whatever it is, and then the only separate thing would be the debt for the high school.
For that way, that's a separate thing.
Which typically, she says we don't have to do it that way, but I think it's right because we, we. Endorsed that bond, and we should know what it is every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. So there will not be a separate article for that.
Just for the, for the capital.
For the capital thing, yeah, yeah. Uh, my understanding is there's still some discussion. In Wolverham now, um, on the number. And that's ongoing. The number we're using is the number as requested in the assessment, right? There's another article, uh. We, he had a placeholder for police admin vehicle, and I thought the board was. Want to, uh, kick that off.
Yeah, I think we want to.
No.
You know, it wasn't a cruiser, it was gonna be, I'd say a cheaper car, it's in here now, particle laden.
We looked at, well, I looked at the latest, I thought, with Scott today, because he asked about them. And I didn't see it.
Okay.
But. Well, maybe it's off, maybe it's.
It's version twelve at this point.
Yeah.
Uh, I didn't see. Oh. Quick, since we're on the subject. The master plan. So they had quotes from three firms. All of which exceeded the seventy-five thousand dollar number that Bob had gotten. The number he'd gotten from the state also required the billing to start. By April thirtieth.
Of this year?
Of this year. So since they had nobody in under seventy-five. And there was no way to appropriate more money prior to the first billing for the state requirements. They pretty much can't go any further at this point. So we can't, we could ask for additional funding and go back out to bid again. But the additional funding here, there's no guarantee that seventy-five thousand will still be there, because it's expiring as of April thirty, if we're not billing against it. So that article may be moved. We can leave it on so we can discuss that. But I don't think there's gonna be any funding needed for it.
How much were the bids, you know?
I think the lowest was ninety-five.
So they have to start spending by April thirtieth?
You have to start putting something against them. I wondered if we could do something with a clerical time, something like that, but again, you're also entering into a contract where you have no. Authority to spend the amount of that, right, you know? I believe they did reach out to a different firm to see if they could change the scope of work and bring it down into the appropriate, or the money they had, and that wasn't a possibility. They did also say, I think from the get-go, that. Six figures is the pre- pretty much the typical number for a master plan, yeah.
Apparently you're just saving money left and right here.
There you go, saving money everywhere.
What else can you take off?
Well, the opioid, opioid. Settlement stabilization account. Um, I believe Cliff, Dick, and Bob. Have come up all the way. They don't need a stabilization fund for the six dollars we're getting. Every year. So. They can just manage it as. I want to say like a gift that, like. The police department gets money, uh, for different things, and they don't need authorization at the town meeting to establish that. So they would just have a re- special revenue account. That thing could be spent by vote of the board selection, rather. If it's a stabilization account, we'd have to go to town meeting to spend twenty bucks out of it. Yeah, a two-thirds vote will spend twenty bucks. So that's probably coming off. Okay. Um, and I think a couple of these other ones. Fiber optic is going to be a presentation of where we stand at this point, or?
I, yeah, there's been some hiccups since I saw it. At this point, I think it's just an informational. Article, we're just.
Take the action thing.
Yeah, you know, actually, talk, talk about it and take the. Yeah, that's what I would recommend right now.
Yep, same thing with the senior center. Um. The accessory apartment, and there has, I seen some comments online. I'd like to see if we can get a copy of that online so people can look it over. But when we talk, when accessory apartment, it strictly is at this point. An in-law apartment. It is not for rental. The planning board has done a good job, uh, of listing the people. Who can stay at this place. Brother, uh, grandson, aunt, uncle. Doesn't say you have to like them, but that's the only people.
I know, my, I still know the mother-in-law is absent from your declaration.
But again, that's the same. All right, um, but again, it's strictly to be an in-law apartment usage, and again, their plan is like, uh, neighboring towns do. To make it subject to a one-year permit that would have to be renewed based on good performance, so. You're having fights with your mother-in-law and the neighbors are upset, you're probably not going to have her back next year. On the other hand, you're suffering enough already. The town shouldn't be on top of it. Oh, gosh, uh, easement agreement, I think we saw some. Movement on that, okay.
Yeah, even today, right?
Not funded for the one fifty, it was some kind of sense of a number for that. Were we thinking five or ten to start seed money?
Yeah, I think we thought ten.
Yeah, seed money, basically, yeah, we'll talk advisory on that now.
Cool resource over the building.
Same, around eleven, I think we said around eleven, yeah. I don't think we have a. Number for the assessors funding. I'm sure they shared that with advisory, but typically that's been in the fifteen to twenty-five range, or so, yeah. Yeah, I didn't really see any. Having been in it for a while, no real. I don't want to say hot button things, but nothing. Other than ordinary.
Do we have the truck to there?
The truck is in there. We'll see, we'll see when surprising CPC thing comes through, which. We've seen those, you know, the fence of the. All right, so we're putting off the, uh. Close and sign the warrant till next week, at least close. Yeah, yeah. Um. Because we do have the opportunity. The advisory hearing is the week after. We're gonna be attending that. We may have the opportunity then to maybe make a change to something based on public input. So maybe we don't sign it until after the, you know, we're still plenty of time. Right. Uh, Laserfish, I, I gotta tell you, I know it's a small amount. But the guy, it really didn't sell me. Um, Craig, I know you wanted to talk about, you know, maybe there's a cloud thing or something with Entree and.
I just want to see if Entree has something. I mean, we buy the, the hardware, we own it. You know, this whole Laserfish thing is just a subscription service that's going to cost us. A yearly fee every year and.
Right.
You know, we can just. Scan it with the hardware to the, the cloud, to our server that we already have.
If we can get.
And just buy OCR software.
Well, that's to keep the OCR, it's, yeah, it's critical.
We need to schedule on it.
Yeah, I try.
Yeah, well, we're on that subject. If we scan the, if we scan the documents. Are we gonna need some type of, uh? I don't know, privacy policy, for instance, there may be something in some of the documents that. You know, we, we would scan, it'd be important to us, but might be. Not really be available to the public.
I guess that would depend, depend on where they were stored on the server, you know, behind what.
So I mean, what, what we, I thought we would have some kind of.
And set some rights management on it as well.
Yeah, yeah, like, some of the executive session minutes that we will post and.
They have that with the system in Islam metal, because they say, they save some of their health things in there.
Yeah, the health, you know, the health, the reports we get from the health, you know.
But again, that's a good question for if we get other software, can we do the same thing, right? Um. Selectmen budget. Are you happy with your number?
I did speak to the advisory and they gave me a little bit more than the rest of you, but.
It's tenure, right?
I think at this point, we, we figured out the stormwater number, right, so we got that back in correctly.
What was the hard number for stormwater? Was it fifty?
Fifty.
Because I think what I was talking to Dick today, it was, it was zeroed out.
Yeah, and I know that when Bob went down the road, he was talking a hundred, and we said that was wrong.
So I think, I think fifty.
The proposal they sent us was fifty, wasn't it?
It was the. It was fifty.
Oh, except there's a piece of it that not due to two thousand eighteen. Two thousand twenty-eight. Twenty-eight?
Eighteen-five.
Eighteen-five is number one. What year was it due?
Um. Where are we now, six, ten, I think?
Okay.
We have, we have three years. You could stagger it over the three years.
Almost a fifty, you're saying we go to forty?
Or what?
Stagger the catchment investigations is what Tom McCord had mentioned during the.
I think he did say that too at the meeting.
He did say.
Yeah.
A hundred thousand was discussed about the rain garden, design for the rain garden and the project that needed to be done. This coming fiscal year, which was totally outrageous, out of whack, and so they dropped that idea.
Okay, okay. So the number we're using then that needs to be spent FY twenty-four is. Fifty, or you're saying there was a potential part of it that could be spread over?
Potential part that could be spread over three years.
Yeah, so I mean.
Anything we can save is gonna be good, it is gonna be a tough year, so let's lock that down.
Have it in front of me, but.
So it's eighteen-five over three years?
That's the. Yeah, see, catchment investigations don't have to be completed till twenty-eight.
But do they need to be started?
They need to be started.
In twenty-four or?
Oh, is that the, is that the twenty-eight number, is that?
Hmm.
No, I think eighteen-five is fiscal year.
Yes, for this year, right?
So that's our part of it, to get that done, so it might be eighteen-five every year until twenty-eight?
Possibly, again, needs to be kept track of because that's an areas, it's only certain where. Uh, but acreage, if you will, so you, every year that goes by, you have to make sure that. They if they are not replicating or cares for a previous year, that's all.
Okay.
But it should go down because the eighteen-five, I think it will take into two of the largest catchment areas this year, so.
I think it is, I think it is.
If we get more detail, we can.
Yeah.
If five thousand rolls over to fifty.
Yeah, I don't think it's a twenty grand.
That's different, yeah, right.
What's the goal there? Fifty.
Yeah. And if we hear that that catchment thing is, if it's not every year at eighteen-five or something, you use spend three thousand every year, that'd be different.
It has to be done by twenty-twenty-eight. I think when we originally looked at the catchment area timeframe, it was really only. A three-year maximum from the time they got started, so.
So is that would that be our only expense, be that eighteen-five? For the, for the year, for next year?
No.
We have another.
You've got monitoring that goes on.
Okay.
That they have to do, um, it it should come down from the. The fifty certainly.
Okay.
But the third, yeah, there's. It's one of those wonderful unfunded mandates.
Add to the list, yeah. They get all the windows open. Yeah.
There's a case waiting right outside the window.
Is there really? I think, right, yeah. They got one month, yeah, exactly. All right, so I think we're in pretty good shape on selectmen budget. I did mention to the advisory, they were meeting tonight, if they wanted to stick their head in, we can kind of get a sense of where we are, but they may have already gone.
I don't know, I only went upstairs.
Yeah.
So we are gonna have an issue though with the Board of Health funds for the public. Grant money that we have, that we have that shortfall, and they're looking for. Twenty-three thousand dollars.
In the current year.
And next year.
And next year.
Right, and next, next year is the last year of the grant. So at some point, we're gonna have to have a line item. Do we wanna do that this year? For that twenty-four, for fiscal year twenty-four? So we have that twenty-four thousand over the shortfall that they're projecting because of salaries and wage increases and. Inflation, I guess, is what they're saying.
Do we have a line item in the Board of Health that's been zeroed out because of this already, that we should now just put a number back in?
That I don't know. Um, talking to Dick today. There was talk of where we could fund the the money, that we just added additional twenty-four thousand dollars to the. The account, or his opinion is we should just do it as a line item because that's transparent, you know, this is where it's gonna go down the road anyway, we're gonna need to. Fund it outside the grant, so it might be the right opportunity to get that line item in there. And funded at twenty-four thousand to cover.
Right.
For fiscal year twenty-four.
And then at some point after May first, we're gonna have to work with Cliff to find some way to fund the shortfall.
For this year.
In the current year, right, with a line-to-line transfer or, I'm not really sure that advisory has touched it, the reserve account at this point. So there is twenty-five there that I think is untapped. I would like to see, and if we see Cliff sometime. You know, maybe get another monthly report. I don't think I've seen one in a couple of months' time, you know?
I thought there was one recently, wasn't there?
Usually with a little joke on it or something like that comes along. Right. Uh, we do have some, well, we don't have a time to necessarily report at this point. We do have some upcoming meetings tonight, the government study committee committee is meeting. Uh, we met the seniors in our building committee, met this morning. We have advisories meeting tonight. We have a zoning. Uh, meeting tomorrow night, uh, they're looking at a, I wish Dick was here, he had a pretty good explanation of it, and actually chatted with Dwayne about it today. Um, it's not A and R per se, it's a.
It's a transfer, it's a transfer of property. Michael Marion's wants to move.
Oh, unknown.
A piece sixty by a hundred and thirty from one end of a parcel he owns, take it off that and and move it, basically.
It's, I feel like he's moving his driveway, right?
Yeah, cuz he has an estate lot in the back behind, and originally the driveway.
Mother was, where he built the house for his mother at that point, or was it?
I think she moved into number seventy.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but originally where the driveway was, they now wanna move that to the other end of the property.
Did I read on there, though, that they were talking that house on the corner, giving them more property?
It it will, yeah, cuz he's. If you will, there's there's three properties and and there's one long skinny one in in the middle, if you will, and he wants to take sixty by a hundred and thirty off of the end. If you're facing the houses on the right-hand side, move that to the house on the corner line and add that in square footage. And then open up a sixty by a hundred and thirty foot. Piece that will go into the back for the eight-acre estate lot.
Now doing the frontage.
Yeah, and there's enough frontage. The question may come up tomorrow night whether. Where where's the house for number seventy? Because by taking that piece out, does it move the house too close to the 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 new property line for sendback? And so they're gonna, they're gonna discuss that.
My question was, the house on the corner, that would be gaining property out of the deal. Do they have to sign off on that?
What, yeah, what ends up happening is if the the ZBA agrees to the change, then the plan, a survey plan will have to be, um. It will be sent back to the planning board for them to sign off.
Cuz technically that's gonna affect their tax, affect their taxes, they're gaining property. Uh, figuring out loud.
That's one.
Surprise.
The other guy loses tax, he lost property, so it could be a wash.
We we did that years ago when we bought the land in the back of our house, we didn't have access to it, so we had to switch. Land with the people next door to us, so we could make a fifty-foot right away, so we could get to our property back.
Hmm, do the assessors know this?
I was supposed to tell. Yes, they do, they, I get my tax bill for that swamp every year.
Nice.
So based on that, we don't have any recommendations.
No, we wouldn't have any.
I know, it was just formal.
Um, Park Rec tomorrow night, they're gonna be obviously discussing, you know, their plan for a park, a rec director. Uh, there is a planning board hearing on the bylaw edition. On Wednesday, um, certainly. Recommending to the planning board. That they have it on Zoom, so we're breaking here, and Laura will be available for that, that's great. Okay. Uh, let's see, the monthly Zoom call. Do you participate in that or on occasion? Cuz you're our fiber expert.
Yeah, when I'm, when I'm available, I will jump on the call, usually it's Pam and Bob, and then. If I'm around, I will.
Okay, cuz you're the expert.
Yeah, actually, I talked to Brian Sullivan today, and he's looking to set up a meeting. Um, with the fiber committee and me, Bob, and Pam, just so we can see where we stand as far as polls go and the next processes.
But with Verizon, we just need to get some checks to them, which will be cut, and I can send them out tomorrow.
We signed off on some today, right?
The national grid, I'll sign, I'll get that in for counter signature, and then. Then, uh, Whip City can really start to do what they need to do. They need to get in.
I know, Gail is making some motions, though. Gail, wherever, you just try to get into maybe the library room.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Landing committee tomorrow night.
Okay, do you feel, um, I think we should formalize asking Doug and Carol in the committee to come in next week and let's get an overview of where we are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, good.
So if we could reach out to them and say, hey, we'll give you a spot next week and let's. Get a sense of where we are of the whole thing. I've got kind of a rough idea.
Yeah.
But that, but, oh, that's right, yeah, so, honestly, I know we're concerned. I don't think we're really in a horrible, horrible shape. If you took the school part of the out of the equation, I think the town budget has been pretty well managed. When you take aside the things we're stuck with, retirement, the testing. You know, things like that, the rest of it's been.
We have the free cash from last year, we shouldn't do anything with it.
Hmm, that would be kind of a question, I was kicking that around, maybe I'm thinking ahead. When we get to the fall time and we have free cash. I would say I'm not a fan of putting much more in stabilization. We're at one point five, one point six right now. You know, we should be using definitely against things. The other part that we haven't talked about, and I know we have a number, but keep in mind, we do have a pretty big number in warrant articles, almost three hundred. Because of the truck and a couple of other things, so that's on top of what the budget's gone up. You know, we could be approaching a million-dollar increase in total appropriations. So. Well, without Monsieur Markel here.
We're right through.
What does that tell you? Hmm, what do you think?
Oh, anything about the, any update on the the accident, just as a, this is.
Nothing official.
Open by what, one, I think.
Yeah.
Replace the pole.
There were two, yeah.
No injuries, they're not hurt, no, they were melted, which was good.
That's amazing, cuz I saw, I have a picture of the, the bus on the tree, I'm sorry, on the telephone pole, like, wow.
Did it, did it have a flat tire, get a flat tire or something?
There was something in the road that they were avoiding.
Oh.
Not a deer or something, there's been a couple of there.
You think about when our kids were on the bus, they had a belt on, most kids have been over the, yeah, so. That is a heck of a picture. So, but we're saying nobody was hurt. All right, is there anything else?
No, I'm just waiting so I can tell them that they can start their meeting.
Their meeting?
Government. Study.
They were starting six thirty.
They cannot get in.
I didn't know that, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Oh, favor.
And there's, there's free water here at the fountain, if anybody wants to.
So.